City Council, tonight is Monday, March 24th, 2008. It's on or about 7:00 PM. Tonight, City Council is first going to be having a public hearing, then going into a special session, and then following that up with a series of five, count them, five, committee meetings. First, the public hearing is in regards to the rezoning of property on Depot Street from M Industrial to R3 multifamily residential. Public hearing is for the public to address council on any concerns or any comments that they wish to make regarding this. Is there anyone wishing to speak before council tonight regarding the rezoning? It's not an unusual occurrence. Mayor, would you like to speak to this?
I would mention that this is rezoning a section between what would be the Louis Louis Retail, the restaurant section, and the depot itself. A small wedge of property in between. It presently is, the whole area is actually technically M manufacturing zone, but since it was developed as a PUD at the time and fell through the cracks in terms of whether you could have residential or not, and since it was city property at the time, and still is, it kind of was not required to have a zoning change. This piece of property is not owned by the city and therefore has to go through a zoning change to work. The recommendation of the Planning Commission is to go from a manufacturing industrial zone to an R3 which is multifamily residential. I've heard some feedback from citizens who are probably not here and obviously didn't want to come or something, about they would like to see more commercial there, so they would actually, well, they were bringing up to me the idea of putting it as a B3 rather than an R3. But I'd say the recommendation from Planning Commission is R3. And that's all I really have to say about it. I read a lot, I've been doing a lot of reading on this, and there's a whole stack and history of the depot, with various people's names on it, I recognize right now, yes. And so, it's quite a, it's quite a voluminous, volume of information there.
Member Bain.
Mr. President, as I was cleaning out some papers, I found 03591, an ordinance that concerns me a little bit. It was passed on the 2nd of December, 1991, and it made some changes, and it would still, I think, be in operation because it wasn't the rezoning. Had to do with how we, we, the city, would allow development to take place, and I think 03591 at the least would have to be perhaps suspended or reversed or whatever, because it says, well, there are a number of things that are there. I think we were going to pass it out to you, but haven't gotten around to it. I have 200 reasons why I haven't gotten around to it at this point, but they're almost all done. First of all, Section 1 said that William Tremblay was granted a number of variants, provision of parking on an adjoining lot under other, that's in parentheses, city ownership, of variants to allow portions of seven out of 47 total spaces within the required front setback. I don't know if we still want those to be in effect. Depot building shall be limited to commercial use. West Union, the standard, anyway, goes on, talks about the depot land space. I personally was involved, I think it's the only thing I ever voted on with the station project, and I remember we were told that it was going, we were going to rent out that front triangle for a spaghetti, for parking for a spaghetti warehouse that was going into that building, and of course, it never materialized, but we have a lease for a dollar a year forever. And it seems to me that since what, well, the lease is done, we have no choice on it. It's about a 40-year lease, and I think, I asked Gary Hunter repeatedly if we could get rid of it, and we couldn't. Anyway, I think that 03591 would really like to go over that and review what the implications are for 013591 with respect to the present rezoning before we go much further. And to that end, I did ask the mayor to consider, this mayor, not the previous one, to consider rezoning our space, oh, open space, which would permit parking, and would be in keeping with what was in the previous work. But at the same time, for, for the reason that open space would permit parking, and we would have the, the design done according to the present standards with respect to landscaping, it would look better than it does now if that's where the parking for these new housing units would, is going to be. I mean, it's a matter of some, some importance, given the fact that we own that frontier area, and 0191 is still in effect.
Comments? Member Phillips, could you speak to why we are having a public hearing and we have already started?
Okay. Well, this is a recommended change in the zoning of the area, so when we make zoning changes, it goes through the Planning Commission and through City Council. The Planning Commission has an option of having a public hearing, and they waived its right, their right to a public hearing in lieu of City Council having our required public hearing. So everyone did receive a copy of that memo. It's been a little while since we talked about it, because the hearings need to be publicized ahead of time, and so, you know, we did talk about it in committee and then put it on the agenda for a hearing tonight. One of the questions that I raised at that time really is that it's rather unusual for council to look at rezoning a single parcel. That isn't something that we've done commonly, and the mayor did give me some information about what constitutes spot zoning and what doesn't, and, you know, believes that this would not actually be spot zoning, but, you know, it just is a little bit of an unusual request, and I'm really grateful that Member Bain did dig out the documents from when this planned unit development came through, because planned unit developments, in a way, can serve as a zoning overlay, so their, their use is approved for that land even without changing the base zone, that, that area's already been through a planning process and been approved by the Planning Commission and by council. So, I think one of the things that'll happen after the hearing is we will need to schedule a time for a full committee meeting and have a chance to talk through this more, but this was really an opportunity for people to come and talk to us, so.
And could we ask, maybe we could, on our 12-hour street tour, take a look at this area?
12 hours?
It's going to get annoying. We keep adding things to it, it's going to be long.
Commentations? Yes, Mayor Wile.
Well, two things. One, I know you were asking for a site map, which I have not received, about this particular zone. I think you were asking me that, Nancy, last, at the last committee meeting. And I think there might be one available. The other question is, what day exactly is our street tour? April 5th? So we went to April 5th?
Yeah.
Okay. That's what I wanted to know. Okay.
Other comments?
Did you want to see a map, proposed map, of the area?
Could we?
Would that be, you want to wait for a committee meeting for all that? Okay.
We, we could go ahead and look at it now, just so people have a little time to digest before we get to the committee meeting.
Why don't you present it to them, and I'll look over their shoulders, how's that sound?
What do you say?
Do you want to introduce yourself first, Jill, that's the podium.
My name is Margaret Schaefer, and I'm the property manager for Athens Station Project, and also oversee the property at 4 Depot Street.
So this is the, so the proposal is, the two buildings in the front here?
Between the existing restaurant and the train station, is that correct?
That's correct.
So this would be where Louis and the Ocre are?
How many bedrooms are we talking about here? Well, we're, you know, it's really odd to have this.
Actually, this, this will be something for your committee meeting next time. We're talking about rezoning here, it's public input time.
Rezoning with, without any idea of how it would be used under the.
Well, it's not up for reading yet, is it?
Is it?
No, it isn't.
Well, that's good.
As far as I know, it isn't. Ask Debbie.
No, I'm looking, it isn't.
No. So this will probably need another committee meeting?
Or two?
At least? Okay.
Well, we'll put this on the next committee meeting agenda. I have a question related to the rezoning that maybe you can answer, from having seen these documents about the order plan, about whether this parcel is part of the existing required parking for the apartments that are in place now.
No, it's not. Never has been.
Other questions from Mrs. Schaefer?
And we'll probably keep this copy, so if anybody in the public wants to look at it.
We can add it to our collection, we have quite a number.
I do want to thank you again for the invitation to go down there. I do need to get down there and see it, but thank you for.
I really didn't want to bug you about it, but Bruce Mitchell was insistent that I ask you to come down.
Thank you.
I've taken a tour, it's very, it's very pretty.
Yeah.
You're all welcome to come down and see.
Very good. Okay. Other comments from our public hearing? We do have a sign-in sheet going around, it's right there. I do know that we were trying to hold for a little while to get some papers. Have we received those yet? Do we, no? No, we haven't? We do?
I think they're going to be on the public.
Well, we would need to amend our agenda?
Thank you, thank you.
Or just do it?
Just.
I think so. If I have no objection from a member of council, while one of the people that have an ordinance here tonight awaits some papers to show up, we do have two presentations that we are going to be going through. How would council feel about jumping to one of those first, and then come back to our special session? Were there any objections?
So the public hearing is done?
The public hearing is done.
Good.
Thank you. Seeing no one wishing to make any further comments.
Mr. President?
Yes?
Regarding the presentations, I would be fine with that as long as the presenters are okay with that as well, and they're prepared for this moment.
I bet they would love to get it, get it out of here. Well, who is going to be the lucky person that gets to do it? A show of hands? Which presentation? Soil and Water?
Soil and Water.
Why don't we do that? Okay. Please. If you could state your name, your affiliation.
I'd like to introduce myself. I'm Pete Warrior, I'm with the Athens Soil and Water Conservation District, and I'd like to thank council, the mayor, and the staff of the city for inviting us here to give a little presentation on who we are and what we are, and to kind of reaffirm our relationship with the city of Athens in providing technical assistance and educational assistance on matters of natural resource conservation. I'm the chairman of the Board of Supervisors, and with me I have the vice chairman, Harold Dodd, and I also have Kathy Bobo over here who is district manager, and I feel that I work for Kathy rather than the other way around. And Kathy is the one who is the point of contact person for the Soil and Water Board. She works very directly with the Safety Service Director, and she is the person that's there at the office every day and manages and runs the office, so. The Soil and Water Districts were formed back in the '30s by the federal government to act as the community liaison between the federal government and the local community in terms of distributing funding to the local communities. We still perform that function today, and we have very close relationships with the U.S. Department of Agriculture and RCS, and I'll let Kathy explain that in a little more detail. There is a Soil and Water District office in every county of every state in the state of Ohio, and actually, in every county in every state in the United States. And the purpose of that is to provide technical assistance and educational programming to the citizens and the communities within each of those counties. Interestingly enough, the urban counties in Ohio have a much more urban portfolio, so to speak. The rural counties naturally would have a much more rural portfolio. And I think what you're going to see is that as we change as a community, and as this community continues to develop and continues to grow, the need for technical assistance and educational programming will continue to grow, and I just wanted to assure you tonight that the Athens Soil and Water Conservation District will be there to serve you. So I'm going to turn the program over to Kathy now, and I think she can explain what we do. Thank you very much.
Actually, he just said it all, I don't need to do anything else. He just said it all, I don't need to do anything else. Okay, I guess I can sit here and do this, since I'm at the computer. Can everyone hear me okay? Okay. We'll go through this pretty quickly, because it looks like you have quite an agenda here. As Pete said, my name is Kathy Bobo, I'm the district manager with the Soil and Water Office. Our vision is leaders in responding to the changing conservation needs of rural and urban communities by providing quality technical and educational assistance. As Pete also mentioned, there is a Soil and Water District in every county. We happen to have been formed on the May 10th of 1946, and we were the 47th district to form in Ohio. We are governed by a board of five supervisors, two of which you've met here tonight. And again, our mission is to promote the wise use and enhancement of our natural resources, Athens County's natural resources for current and future generations. Again, we're governed by a board of five supervisors, and they each serve a staggered three-year term, and I will let you know that they are on a volunteer basis. These guys just like to, like to do what they're doing. Their reward is to know that they are protecting the resources in Athens County. Any citizen that is 18 years of age residing in the county is eligible to serve as a board supervisor, and anyone that is 18 years of age and either owns land or resides in the county is, is able to vote for supervisors. And that actually, our election actually takes place during our annual meeting, which is in the fall of each year, and you all are invited to come if you'd like to. Our current staff consists of a district manager, a district technician, a conservation education coordinator, and a part-time administrative assistant, and an intermittent equipment manager. The supporting partners that we have for the Soil and Water District, as far as financially, is the Athens County Commissioners with the city of Athens, and then we also receive funds from ODNR, Division of Soil and Water Conservation. Some of the technical support that's available to the city through our office, as Pete mentioned, through memorandums of understanding with other government agencies with us, is engineers, urban stormwater specialists, and soil conservationists from the ODNR office. And we also have a federal agency that we have pretty close partners with, and they're locally here in the county, and they, it's a district conservationist, a civil engineering technician, and a conservation specialist. Some of the technical assistance that we're able to provide to the residents of, well, Athens city residents and the county even, are soil, home site, drainage, and erosion evaluations, as well as landslide evaluations. And of course, we can't forget the agricultural assistance that we provide to our agricultural community. That's kind of our base roots, how we got started, and we certainly can't forget the assistance that we provide to them. We also do pond site maintenance evaluations. We also provide assistance for riparian buffers to protect the waters of the state and also the streams in Athens County. And as you can see, the benefit that you have there with the streams, the riparian buffers along the stream, I guess we all have to remember that we live in the watershed, and we all live downstream of someone, so what we, what they do affects us and what we do affects them. The other important part of our program is our education program. Harold's theory is, if we can educate our youth about our natural resources, protection of our natural resources, as well as recycling has with their program, we'll be doing good. And I think we do a pretty good job, but we all know that education is a continual thing. Last year, we provided 145 presentations, education programs, to close to 4,700 people. And some of those programs included school programs, those are some of the things that we did with the school. The one on the top right corner was Morrison Elementary, and it was a living histories We have workshops for both adult and youth education. I'll put a quick plug in, we have a Conservation Connection tour coming up in April the 19th, and it's actually, there's going to be a the drive-it-yourself tour, and there's four stops that we're going to visit. It's Wendy Hills Horse Farm, the Amesville Park with our new sewage treatment facility, Green Edge Gardens, which is an organic vegetable farmer, and Jeff and Michelle Greenfield, who owns Sun Power, we're going to tour their home, and it runs on solar and wind energy, so it'll be an exciting tour for us.
What time of day was that?
I'm sorry, it's April the 19th, it's from 1:00 to 5:00 in the afternoon.
And it's a drive-it-yourself?
It's a drive-it-yourself tour, so you can show up at any time you like and visit as many stops as you'd like.
And I think it's Third Son and not Sun Town?
I'm sorry?
For Greenfield, isn't it Third Son and not Sun Town?
I'm sorry, did I say Sun? It is Third Son, I am so sorry. Third Son, yes, you're right. I guess another important activity that we do, and as Harold mentions, in educating our youth, is the Envirothon competitions. I don't know if anybody is, enters or familiar with those. Actually, I have some information for you, too. But this is, this is an excellent program, and last year, the, this Athens High School team won the area competition and represented us at the state competition. And I know that we've had some teams from Athens represent us at the national competition as well. Nancy Sun was one of, on one of those teams, so I knew she was e- familiar with this one. Actually, 2008 marks the 20th year for the Ohio Envirothons, so we've had really good success with it. The other big program that we do is the Third Grade Water Fest. It's held at Athens High School, we work with the Ecology Club there, and the students peer teach, as well as they have about 12 to 15 other agency personnel come in and set up stations that the third graders can rotate around, and it's an all-day event, and we have close to, well, actually, we average about 500 students at this event, so, and it's coming up soon here in May. Just some other education activities that we offer. Some outreach activities is, the district provides a $500 district scholarship for students pursuing a career in natural resources or agriculture, and actually, the deadline for that's the 28th of this month, which is Friday, so if you know of anybody that's interested, have them see me. And then we also provide a scholarship for forestry camp, which is through Ohio Forestry Association, and that's at Camp Muskingham, I believe, and I think the deadline for those applications are the beginning of May, so if you know of anybody that would be interested, have them give us a call. We have a resource library that we have all kinds of educational information that we can loan out to landowners, teachers, whoever that's interested. We've started that a few years back. Communications through public service, those are some of the things we do. Actually, we have a newsletter that's getting ready to go out here real soon, you're getting a first glimpse of it there. That's, that's the front page of our next newsletter going out, and if you want to be on our newsletter mailing list, by all means, we'd be glad to put you on there. Some of the service programs that we offer to the residents of the county, and some you're probably familiar with again, is the seedling sale. You guys have probably purchased some of the tree seedling sale, tree seedling, tree seedlings through our office. I think we average about 40,000 of those things, we handle those a year. We're right in the middle of, of that right now, actually. And then, the other big one, I think, is the aerial photos. We have, we have a lot of, a really nice supply of historical photos in our county, and we get a lot of people that's interested in coming in, looking at those, seeing how the land has changed over time. I think we have them as far back as 1939 is in there, and I think maybe 12, 13-year increments up to the 1980s, so. So then my question, you're probably thinking, what in the world is she doing here? Which is, is, I guess, basically because in working with the mayor in Ilahu through the land development ordinance, what, what do we do for, for you guys through the land development ordinance? And some of these pictures you're probably going to recognize. Does anybody recognize this?
Yes.
Does anybody never want to see them again? Please, no.
It's embarrassing.
Not next year, you're.
Yeah. Just one more set, and then we'll move on.
Nice slip.
Yeah.
That's not, that's not in the city, though.
Okay. Three Mile Island?
Which is good for me.
Three Mile Island, sorry.
Take a look at Jeff Hill sometime.
The one in the bottom may not be, but it's a good example of.
The other one's kind, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, it is.
So how could you let such a thing happen?
It was before you, right?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah. So that's why we're here tonight, I guess, just to kind of give you an update, update on what, what we do for you with the land development ordinance. And you all, I'm sure, are familiar with the land development ordinance. And basically, what it is, is a document that requires planning to prevent some of those pictures that you just saw, stormwater, that addresses stormwater management, erosion control, and landslips. And the reason this, we kind of got involved in this is back in the '90s, late, or I think probably late '80s, early '90s.
I remember it well.
Yeah, okay. But there was a lot of development pressures, issues going on with the city down on the East End, and that's where you saw some of those pictures from. And so, because of some of the flooding and the stormwater problems, there were, the district conservationist that was in our office at the time, Rick Patorick, had the foresight to say, hey, we, we can help, we can help you guys with this, you know, let's put together some type of an ordinance to, to plan for some of these things. And so, from '91 to present, the Soil and Water District has been, had memorandum of understanding with you to help provide some technical services with the land development ordinance. And the assistance we provide is to city, the landowners, potential homeowners, developers, and contractors. And some of the services that we are able to provide are soil and home site evaluations, plan reviews, subdivision reviews, stormwater management reviews, erosion control reviews, and also some educational programming. I know the board, again, education is a big thing, and I think they're committed to putting together some educational information for landowners, and one of the things that we're talking about is updating the home buyers, home builders guide, to kind of give landowners a step, you know, some steps to follow, and when they're, when they're looking at property or when they want to develop it.
Kathy, just real quick, is there a fee for any of the services that you provide inside the city?
I guess I should say that. There is no fee, no, there's no fee inside the city or outside for either, either place. You guys are paying for that at this point. And the last thing I guess we have here is, that's in the memorandum of understanding, is to provide some erosion control and stormwater management training. That's one of the things that came out of the discussion was to be able to provide some training for some city employees, because I guess they are, are looking at some of these job sites as far as, you know, what's acceptable, what's not, I mean, when they're doing some inspection-type thing, just to be aware of, you know, best management practices that are being applied, are they being applied properly, are they making a difference, that kind of thing. So, with that, this is my contact information, and I'd be glad to answer any questions if you have any.
My question is really related to what kind of review you can do for property owners or developers as they're going through the process. One of the things that we hear often is that it's One of the things that we hear often is that it's really expensive when they get into looking at the engineering for stormwater management and things like that, and the soils engineering. You mentioned having a relationship with an engineer. Is that something that's available, that property owners would be able to get that kind of technical, like really detailed technical assistance? Or would your review be more kind of an early planning review, and then they'd still have to do their engineering?
I think ours is going to be the early planning review. We've talked with Paula and some of the, you know, just reviewing some of the plans that are, I know you guys probably already have some engineers, types of people that do that for you now. But, you know, we may be able to help do that from, in the beginning stages, instead of doing an individual. What we can do for individuals is basically do the soils investigations, go out, determine the type of soil that's there, and give them the characteristics and what, if there is any limitations that they have, that they may be faced with when they're, when they're actually going to build on that site. It's not saying that they can't build there. This is just saying, this is what you, this is what you might come up against. To me, I'd rather know that ahead of time than going in, putting in a house, or putting in a structure, and then having something fail, and you have to go back and replace or refix, you know, fix it later on. To me, you know, I think that makes more sense. It's more economical in the long run. So.
One of the reasons why we wanted this to be presented is because we want to cycle through our code officers eventually and some of our employees, just so they, they know you're there as the first contact to recommend you for homeowners. It's, as you say, it's the first step to decide whether they need to, to hire an engineer or something like that.
Right.
So it's, it's a cheap step in that sense.
Right.
And I know, I think I have a copy of your soil atlas for the county, which I find very instructive, too. So, thanks for the presentation.
Kathy, if I could, if I may, I think Nancy Van and I are the only two people in this room that was here when we passed the so-called hillside ordinance.
Yes.
It's what we called, oh, and of course Clerk of Council.
Debbie.
Debbie, who predates this building, I believe.
We were very young then.
That's right, that's right. It was Nancy that was there. I find myself kind of wondering about the contract that we have with you folks, and maybe my question really needs to go to one of your governors there, in the sense that is shortly after that was when we started back then supplementing your budget by about 12,000, I think.
Still 12,000.
Is that still the same amount?
Mm-hmm.
Is that an unusual kind of relationship with, that's what I was thinking. Does the county also supplement your budget? I saw, no?
Yes.
They do?
Yeah.
Okay, for the same kind of services?
And then some.
And then some.
And then some, yeah.
Funds. Okay.
No, too.
Yeah.
Those are matched monies from the state, matched by money through the Ohio Department of Natural Resources, the business, all that.
Okay.
We were, Athens County was probably.
Was the first city in the state of Ohio to come cooperate with the Soil and Water District.
Good for you.
Yeah, I guess. Okay, thank you. Other comments?
I'd like to, again, thank you all for coming and presenting this.
Thank you.
If we can answer any other questions, we'd be glad to. I have for you the copy of our annual report, if you're interested from last year.
Thank you. On Ilau'hu, with your permission, we'll jump back to our special session.
Yes, that's good. We get rolling.
Are now in receipt of the eight or said-mentioned documents that we needed to go forward. So called order, a special session of Athens City Council, March 24, 2008. We do have a quorum with five of the six present sitting members of council presence. Ordinances for second reading, O2408.
I'm sorry? I didn't know if you were going to do our second presentation.
No, we'll go through this, and then we will jump back to committee meetings where we'll have the presentation.
Thank you.
O2408, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to submit a fiscal year 2008 community housing improvement program, CHIP grant application to the Office of Housing and Community Partnerships, Ohio Department of Development, and designating Hocking Athens Perry Community Action Agency as a community housing improvement program grant contract administrator, and declaring an emergency.
Bill, you want to talk about this a little bit?
Mayor Wild.
Okay.
We have Doug Stanley here, representing the Hocking Athens Perry Community Action Agency, to talk about some changes to the CHIP program that we were unaware of prior to the other readings.
Doug, welcome back to the city council. It's nice to see you again.
I know most of the council members, but for those of you I haven't met before, my name's Doug Stanley, and I work with Hocking Athens Perry Community Action. Just as a bit of perspective, and I'll make this very brief, the city of Athens has been applying for and receiving grants through the CHIP program, which provides a variety of housing services since 2003, I believe, was the first one that our agency was involved with. And our agency administers, has submitted the application, administers that program for the city of Athens. We obviously get paid for doing that. All of our funds come out of the administrative budget of those grant applications. Again, a grant was submitted in 2003, again in 2004 for a two-year period, in 2006 for a two-year period. That grant's wrapping up right now. The city is again eligible to apply for funding in 2008. I spoke with the mayor and Paula several weeks ago to go over the, some changes that had occurred in the application process for this year. The more I've gotten into looking at those changes, the more that will affect how and if an application is to be prepared. And I just thought it was fair to council, enter the mayor, to spell out those changes for you, so we're all on the same page, and we don't build up expectations, or we know what the prospects really are for receiving this funding this year. Has that she and I?
Yeah, I think everybody has a thought.
Okay, great. That pretty much summarizes the situation we're in. I was at a training like six weeks ago, the state conducted, and the application process has several changes this year. In the past, applications were rated, scored competitively, and it was certainly advantageous for the grantee, in this case, the city, to come up with match money for the grant. The program used to allow, there was a source of match money that didn't require the city to donate the money. If we provided down payment assistance, homeownership assistance for a family, the value of that private mortgage money was counted as matched for the grant. And that's what we did. We're successful doing that. Six weeks ago or so at that application training at the state, we discovered that the state of Ohio will no longer allow that, for no particular reason other than they just won't allow it anymore. That has an impact on the city's grant application, because in order to get those priority points to make the application more competitive, other funds would have to come into the grant. And I don't know that, that those funds are available now. The second factor that's changed is that in the past, the state always encouraged applicants to target certain areas within the city or the county or wherever. There was no competitive advantage to doing that, and there was no real reason to do it, and we didn't do it. They've changed that again. That essentially, they're not requiring an applicant to target an area, but they're not, they're going to give bonus points or something like that to an applicant if they do that. In the city of Athens, it'll be extremely difficult to target an area because of the demographics. Athens city is a tough nut to crack anyway for this program, because it's geared toward low and moderate income homeowners for the most part. And there aren't many out here. Most of the low to moderate income families that can be identified are renters. Students typically qualify as, as, in the census and in the demographics the state looks at, students would be the biggest population of low and moderate income people in the city, but they're all renters. I think it's three-fourths or something like that of the housing units in the city of Athens are rental units. So we're by definition only dealing with a quarter of the, the housing units, and the vast majority of them are not low and moderate income. So we have a very small group to work with anyway, and then, and they're spread over the city, and to try and target them in a two or three block area is very, very difficult. I don't, I don't see any real way now the city could have a target area for this application. Another factor, that is, if you target an area, they're going to make you, the city contribute, or budget a large percentage of the grant application into that target area, and then come up with other resources, other matching funds in that target area, too. I don't think it makes sense this time round. And the third and final issue, it's not, I don't know that it's necessarily germane now, but the state of Ohio, because of reduced funding on this federal level, is looking at grantees revolving loan funds. The city of Athens, years ago, generated some revenue, I know, through its economic development programs. That money is in a revolving loan fund. I don't know what the balance is, and it's really not my business. But the city of Athens also has a housing revolving loan fund. There's nothing in it now, because we've only been in business for five years, and there hasn't been enough time for any of the paybacks to come back to the city. If there was money in that housing revolving loan fund, the state of Ohio would require that the city use it as, as money for the CHIP application. That could be used as part of the match money, though, but there's no money there. They are also going to be looking at every applicant's economic development revolving loan fund. If there is a sufficient balance, uncommitted balance in that RLF, they will require that the applicant use that money for its CHIP application. Again, I don't know the status of the city's economic development revolving loan fund, if it's over 200,000, if there's anything over 200,000 that's not committed.
It may depend on what they mean by committed. It looks like there's 277,000 in it with 200 appropriated, but I don't know if that's encumbered.
It's pretty, it's pretty loose. They're saying committed or pending projects. If you've got 277,000 and, and that's kind of committed, you know, depending how you look at it.
Well, 200,000 has been appropriated, but I don't know if that's.
That, I'm sure that would be taken, that would be considered.
Committed, committed, okay.
Part of the thrust of this is I'm aware that this puts a little bit different slant on what we were trying to do with the grant. Previous CHIP grants were not putting a lot of commitment into our funds. And my, my, really, my recommendation, and as I said, the last paragraph is whether we proceed or not is up to what we want to look at in terms of a good hard look about, at our, our funding and, and how we want to do this, in terms of target area and everything like that. In terms of 2408, we could continue with the reading. That's just authorizing me to do it, but I wouldn't go forward unless I got a harder look at our finances and a harder look at what we intend to actually use this CHIP money for at the time. And that's why I brought Doug here, because I realize that the landscape has changed for this type of grant over time.
And then we're doing a couple of activities under the current grant. There's the down payment assistance for home buyers, and there's some repairs.
Repairs and.
Home repair and home rehab. Those are the, the things we've done over the last five years.
Majority of it's usually repairs, a smaller amount of rehab, and very small mortgage assistance or housing assistance. Just again, because of the difficulty of trying to match a house with a income level.
Just for council's information, I spoke with the city's field representative at the state House, Office of Housing and Community Partnerships, and just kind of bounced some ideas off her about, you know, this is going to be tough for the city of Athens to, to pull off this time around, because you changed the rules in the middle of the game on us, or actually, right at the end of the game. And I explained to her that targeting, I just didn't think was going to work in the city of Athens. She understood that, and I asked her, you know, well, is that going to hurt the city's application too much? Eh, maybe, maybe not. You know, who knows? What if we don't, I mean, there's no requirement that we target, that you target. There's no requirement that you come up with match money. And if they don't come up with any matching money, what happens? You know, how many points do they lose? Is an application from the city still going to be competitive? Well, maybe. I go back to 2003, the first time. I stood here and told council, I don't think there's a chance in hell this application's going to be funded, because it's an experience the city had had about 10, 12 years before that. Well, I'm glad I didn't stake my reputation on that, because it was funded, okay? The next year, in 2004, I said, you know, we're good to go, and, and the application was funded, scored a grade. Same thing two years ago. Matter of fact, I think two years ago, the application that the city of Athens submitted was the number one ranked application in the state, that funding round. Some of that, it's not my doing, it's some of that has to do with, again, the demographics of the city. It, it's somewhat skewed in the census, but according to the census, Athens is one of the poorest communities in the, in the state. Any application submitted by the city of Athens gets a lot of distress points in the rating scale. There may be enough distress points to override the lack of a target area and the lack of matching funds, who knows? It's a crapshoot.
Okay.
And I honestly, I mean, I've enjoyed the relationship with the city the last five years, very hopeful that an application, whether this round or the next round, would be funded. Love to continue that work with the city, but it's up to you. It seems to me there's two or three things that can be done. We can go ahead and submit the application without even worrying about meeting some of these, these, this new criteria, and see what happens. We can not submit at all and try and lay the groundwork for submitting an application next year. I've talked with the mayor and with Paula about some ideas about how we might be able to come up with some match money without having to dig it out of the city's coffers. I think that might work. Or you can kick in some money, whatever you want to do. I mean, that's, I'm fully prepared to move ahead however you want. It's what I do for a living, so, you know, I get paid whether I do it or not.
We do have a committee meeting scheduled for this. We could maybe get a sense of counsel, and as the mayor says, we're only authorizing him to apply, so he can use his judgment also.
The application deadline for this is May 2nd.
Yeah, so we have some time.
There's a, a couple of public hearings for this that have to be conducted. One of them is scheduled for this Wednesday. I'll go ahead and take care of that, so it's, that requirement's met if we proceed, and certainly giving two or three weeks then to schedule a second public hearing.
Okay, thank you.
Sure?
On the public hearing, it is a combined city-county public hearing, correct?
The, the hearing, there's a, it's very convoluted, but there's a, a housing advisory committee meeting Wednesday, which is a combination of the city's and the county's advisory committees. They can, they're being conducted at the same time, in this very room. At the same time, there's going, the city is going to conduct its first public hearing for this CHIP grant. That's a procedure the state is authorizing, actually encouraged, you know, these to do, so you don't have to have 20 different meetings.
Just, just real briefly, before you go.
Sure.
If the city did commit to providing matching funds, what, how much are we talking about here? What would be the rest cost per year?
Twelve and a half percent of the total grant application. I'm estimating, in past, the past couple of years, the city has applied for around 300, 320,000 dollars. So 12 and a half percent, if my math is, it's like 35, 36,000 dollars, something like that neighborhood.
Any other comments on members of council first?
The public meeting is, begins at 2:30?
2:30.
2:30.
I just wanted to ask you a question, Doug. Greg Brothers ran by the new. Do you have any idea?
Do you have any idea what happened to the revolving loan fund that came out of the station project and the West Side redevelopment? It seems to have disappeared.
I don't know, that's.
That, no, I mean, there was, there was supposed to have been a loan fund. I believe that it got some kind, how it ended up at EDC. So I think it's worth looking into as far as the source of funding. Little, little, little backtracking and auditing would help.
Thanks, Greg.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Onto the next ordinance. Ordinance 2508, an ordinance authorizing the payment of prior year expenses and amending the 2008 appropriations.
Mr. President, at this time, just to throw a little wrench into everything else, I'd like to ask that we consider ordinance 2508 and suspension of the rules.
Second.
We have talked, this is, as the title says, this is a payment of a prior year expense. We've talked in the past that it's council's policy to pay these prior year bills as soon as possible, and so that's the reason for. This has actually been paid, but it, it was paid with 2008 funds, so what this is really doing is authorizing an additional $5,000 to the contract for 2008. But because it's a prior year bill, we need to clean up this whole process.
Motion on the second, further discussion on suspension of the rules only. All those in favor of suspending the rules, ordinance 2508.
Aye.
Opposed? The rules have been suspended.
Mr. President, I move adoption of O-2508. Second. This ordinance relates to a fourth quarter payment to Ilgard, a division at the university who does mapping for the city, and all kinds of mapping. A payment of $5,000 for the fourth quarter. This, we received the invoice in 2008. It was paid, but it was paid with current funds. So what we need to do with this ordinance is authorize an additional appropriation of $5,000 to the 2008 contract for Ilgard. That will clear up this glitch that's occurred.
We up to adopting?
Yes.
Further discussion. All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 2508.
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance 2808, an ordinance closing portions of Court Street and Washington Street on Friday, June 20th, July 18th, and August 15th, for a cruise in. Ordinance 2908, an ordinance closing a portion of Court Street between Washington and State Street from 8:00 AM on Saturday, July 19th, to 1:00 AM on Sunday, July 20th, for a family music festival, quote, Boogie on the Bricks, and suspending the enforcement of Athens City Code Title VII, Section 7.05.26b1, City Garage Metered Parking Rates and Regulations.
Yes, Mr. President, I wasn't quite sure if we needed to, as member Ghazni mentioned last week, to look at the suspension of the noise ordinance?
Let's not do that.
Okay, so if we can move to amend to O-2908 suspension, I guess.
To suspend the rules on this, or to amend it to, okay. To add also suspending the noise ordinance for the same event?
Correct.
Okay. We have a motion on the second.
Please request, if I may, that it identified the ban stand. A police department had requested that.
It is.
Okay.
Okay. Motion on the second to amend ordinance 2508 to include a clause for also suspending our noise ordinance for the same festival. Further discussion on the amendment only. All those in favor of the amendment have stated.
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance has been amended and read for the first time. You want me to suspend?
It's a long time in the future.
Very good. Ordinance 3008, an ordinance closing a portion of Court Street, West State Street, Congress Street, West Washington Street, and West Union Street on Sunday, June 1st, 08, between the hours of 1:00 PM and 6:00 PM, for the First Annual Athens Great Bicycle Race and Family Fun Cycling Challenge.
Again, the request is to close the streets two hours in advance of the event. Can I, if you could speak to how long after an ending event?
We can probably clean it up within an hour.
Do we have a motion to possibly amend the ordinance for this time?
Sure, if that's necessary, I guess.
It's indicated it takes two hours in advance to have enough notification to get the cars cleared and.
Cars cleared, hay bales put up, all the other stuff.
Sure.
And then I guess we'll.
I know that you do plan on discussing this further in committee. We don't have to do that right now. We can discuss it in committee and then do whatever.
Sure.
Why don't we do it that way?
Okay.
Okay, thanks. Ordinance 3308, an ordinance authorizing the service safety director to purchase one unmarked police vehicle. Ordinance 3408, an ordinance establishing the allocation of sewer service charges to the sewer debt fund 758, limiting operating budgets in order to reduce short-term debt, amending the 2007 appropriation ordinance that threw actively to January 108, and declaring an emergency. Ordinance 3508, an ordinance amending the Athens City zoning code to include zoning regulations for the establishment of sexually oriented businesses within the city of Athens. O-3608, an ordinance granting a revocable license to the Hartley Company, allowing the installation of monitoring wells in the roadways of May Avenue, East State Street, Tulane Road, and an unnamed alley to the south of East State Street. Ordinance 3708, an ordinance granting a revocable license to Glenn Knudsen, owner of 215 Columbus Road, for use of the city right-of-way for a sign. Ordinance 3808, an ordinance granting a revocable license to James E. Moss, North Moss Restaurants, LLC, doing business as WG Grinders, 120 West Union Street, for the use of the city right-of-way. Onto ordinances for first reading. Ordinance 3908, an ordinance accepting a limited warranty deed from Athens, O-8 LLC, Holzer Clinic, and declaring an emergency. Member Phillips.
Mr. President, I move that we consider O-3908 under suspension of council rules.
Second.
The reason for the suspension is there is a deadline for the grant application, and we need to have the easements and the rights of way secured for that grant application process. We are not committing any funds to this project.
Motion on the second to consider ordinance 3908 under suspension of council rules. Is there further discussion on suspension only? All those in favor of suspending the rules.
Aye.
Opposed? The rules have been suspended.
Mr. President, I move adoption of O-3908.
Second.
This ordinance accepts a limited warranty deed from Holzer Clinic and declares an emergency, and this is for a portion of the, the right-of-way for the proposed road. And there will be three other ordinances following this for the other portions of that road.
Okay.
And I, it's my understanding the law director has reviewed the documents, they have all the required signatures, and it's all good to go.
That is correct.
I think when we have a special session, it is a limited agenda. You don't have all the things that we would normally have on our agenda, and I think we would be a little remiss not to mention that we did receive several comments from community members, and I would like to acknowledge email messages from Brandy Sexton, Amanda McLean, Jenny Fauber, Terrell Mingus, Jennifer Bell, Terry Stotts, Dee Cleland, and a Sarah Lee, most of whom I think worked at a clinic hospital and have raised some objections, but I do think it is certainly a misunderstanding of where the funding is coming, and if we could speak to that just a little bit, that before we pass something under suspension of the rules with emergency clauses, when we have had that many email transmissions from community members that feel very passionately about this issue.
Absolutely, and I've responded to each of the people individually who did send emails explaining that we're not using city funds for this project. That was really the main objection. A lot of folks pointed out that many of our existing city streets have potholes, which, you know, Andy's working on repairing as best he can with cold patch, but that we could be using our tax dollars to maintain existing streets, and, and really expressing concerns about whether we would use city tax funds for this project, which we are not doing. The, the ordinance that authorized application for the, the ARC funds, I think, was passed previously. So all we're doing in this whole series of ordinances is accepting the deed and the easements for the, where the road is going to be built. So Holzer will be using some grant funds and their own funds to construct the road, which we will then accept as a public road, because it provides access to, I believe, four different properties. So it will then become a public road, and so our action tonight is really accepting those easements, so that it can become part of the public right-of-way.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on really what council is doing here tonight? Member Sam.
Just to clarify, the previous ordinance that authorized application for the ARC grant, again, that's not, there's no city money in there, that's Appalachian Regional Commission money. Doesn't flow through, that is not our money.
Are we ready to adopt? All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 3908.
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance 4008, an ordinance accepting a perpetual easement from Hawking River Properties, LPs, limited to the city of Athens for the construction of an access road to Holzer Clinic and adjacent businesses, and declaring an emergency. Again, member Phillips.
Mr. President, I move that we consider O-4008 under suspension of council rules.
Second.
The reason for the suspension is the grant deadline that's pending.
Further discussion on suspension only. All those in favor of suspending the rules.
Aye.
Opposed? The rules have been suspended.
Move adoption of O-4008.
Second.
This ordinance, again, accepts one of the easements that's needed for this road.
Further discussion. All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 4008.
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance 4108, an ordinance accepting a perpetual easement from R Future Development, limited to the city of Athens, for the construction of an access road to Holzer Clinic and adjacent businesses, and declaring an emergency. Again, member Phillips.
Mr. President, I move that we consider O-4108 under suspension of the rules.
Second.
The reason for the suspension is the pending deadline.
Further discussion on suspension only. All those in favor of suspending the rules.
Aye.
Opposed? Rules have been suspended.
Mr. President, I move adoption of O-4108.
Second.
This ordinance accepts another one of the easements for this public right-of-way.
Further discussion. All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 4108.
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance 4208, an ordinance accepting a perpetual easement from, oh boy, Chiriji Motel, Inc., to the city of Athens for the construction of an access road to Holzer Clinic and adjacent businesses, and declaring an emergency. Member Phillips.
Mr. President, I move that we consider O-4208 under suspension of the rules.
Second.
The reason for the suspension is the pending deadline.
Further discussion on suspension only. All those in favor of suspending the rules.
Aye.
Opposed? The rules have been suspended.
Mr. President, I move that we adopt O-4208.
Second.
This ordinance accepts the fourth easement for accepting this public right-of-way, and again, none of these four ordinances commit any city funds to this project.
Member Bank.
I'd like to thank council member Phillips for accomplishing what we asked for not so long ago. I appreciate your work on this, David.
Other comments? All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 4208.
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. Having addressed on all items on our special meeting agenda, we now stand adjourned. Onto the environment committee. Member Ghazni.
Um, I, we already had the presentation by the Soylent Water Conservation District, and I do not have miscellaneous tonight, so we can move right along.
Are there any other miscellaneous items anyone wishes to bring before the environment committee? Seeing none, onto the recreation committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. This evening, we had a presentation from Ms. Emily Prince, who is the director of Arts West, and she and I have been meeting and discussing some of the planning and programs that have been happening, and I have been attending those as well at Arts West, and so it's a, with great honor, I present Ms. Prince.
Thank you, and thank you, council. I'll be very brief, I'll give a very broad overview of all the wonderful and exciting things that we're doing at Arts West, and invite you to join us this weekend for OVST's presentation of A Glass in Najri, Tennessee Williams' first play, which is Thursday through Saturday at 8:00 PM and Sunday at 2:00 PM. It's a good way to get an idea of what we're doing, and so I will begin. Here you can see Athens' community gateway to the arts. And what this will be is just small snippets of information from 2005 to 2007. So our mission is to make facilities, resources, and opportunities available to arts organizations, individual artists, and community residents. And we harness focus, which is sometimes difficult, for all individuals engaged in the creation, performance, and exhibition of the arts, and promotes activities preserving the beauty, heritage, and culture of our town. And so here is a couple of images that aren't displayed, so you can't see how exciting they are, but it tells you we do performing arts, music, visual arts, we have meetings, classes, and workshops. These are our boards and commissioners. We have an advisory consortium, which is a non-voting advisory board for Arts West, which is Robert Winters and Michael Tobar, they're both members of the Arts Commission, William Cook, Constance Gabbard, Barbara Fioki, you can read this, Winnie McVicker, Marilyn and Guy Ramanko, Christina Salerno. We also have the Athens Municipal Arts Commission, and the two events that Arts West produces, which is the Humble Play, Appalachian New Play Festival, and Arttoberfest, have separate committees, and so that's what you see there. This is the Athens Municipal Arts Commission Town Meeting at the Community Center in March of 2005, which was gathering information and public input about the need for a performing arts center. So there, and you were there, and you were there, and. And this is our performance space prior to renovations. And these are some things in support of our mission. We have a 200-seat accessible performance space, a parking lot, a lobby with kitchenette. We have over 500 events per year so far. Access to the performing arts to over 2,500 schoolchildren through partnerships, performances, and classes, and that's going to be higher this year, which is very exciting. Rehearsals and performance spaces. We offer incubation to area arts organizations and individuals. Technical support to local theater groups and musicians. Office and administrative support to theater groups and musicians. And here we see some very famous local musicians, J.D. Hutchison and the local girls, on our opening, July 9, 2005. This is from our, and there's a really nice image where that X is, which worked before it came. This is from our quilt discovery, which was in 2007. And these are Olympian founders. This was our capital improvement funding campaign. And so these are people who made gifts of $100 or more. And then here we have some information about opening, and the studio for young actors, and the community cookout in the parking lot. And some classes. And in 2005, we move in, 2006, full schedule. And in 2005, we move in, 2006, full schedule. Some of your old friends there. And here's the performance space after renovations. Grants and gifts report. And the Ohio Arts Council gets its own page. And these are some events from 2006 and 2007. This is the band Slaughter Drive from 2006. And this was a partnership with W O U B and the Community Center where we brought Clifford the Big Red Dog to Arts West. And in a partnership with Ohio University, we had a Balinese puppeteer. And this is an image from that. And this is from our Appalachian New Play Festival, where we solicit plays that highlight the works of Appalachia. And we've had submissions from all over the country for this. We're going into our third year, and this reading was a play from a gentleman from West And these are the groups that use Arts West for rehearsal or performance space. So we have the Ohio Valley Summer Theater, the Studio for Young Actors, the Los Flamingo Company, the Athenian Players, the Genesis Theater Project, the Corporation for the Performing Arts. Who knew there were so many? Actors and Movable Theater, Aquabear Legion, Appalachian Progressive Education Center, Music Together in Athens, Factory Street Dance Studio. And the Studio for Young Actors. And the Ohio Valley Summer Theater. They did Greater Tune in 2006, and this is from Amma in the White Crane. Athenian Players, they perform at Stewart's and use Arts West for rehearsals. And the Actors Movable Theater, who perform all over Athens County but have been known to use Arts West from time to time. This is our definition of incubation. It's touring companies, bands, activities that work with Arts West as a home base and perform at other locations in the community. Some of these activities could result from classes and workshops, while others could be designed from their very conception with touring as their specific purpose. Right now, we're incubating the Aquabear Legion, which is a collective of bands from all over the state of Ohio, and the Appalachian Progressive Education Center. And this is a picture from Jackie and the Giant. And these are some programs that have been led by Domi, who runs the Appalachian Progressive Education Center. This is a Noi Show, which is the last Sunday of every month from 6 to 9. You're all welcome to attend. It's also a potluck. Here's a brief overview. Total number of events, including Arts West Presents, rental activities, classes, workshops, art exhibitions, and meetings for 2,007, 762. Total attendance and people served is 21,647, and grants and gifts totaling $56,583. So that was good. And here's a more detailed list of the grants and support. One thing we're very excited about is a gift from Magic Video, which was 100 Greatest Movies on VHS, and those are available to the community. And some renovations that happened in 2007. See, and then here comes the exciting part. Jack Wright, who will also be performing on April 5 for the Passion rate CD release at, from 6 to 8:30. You got to have the audience shots, too.
Emily, if you may briefly just reflect on that last image as well. That was just this past winter, this year.
Yeah, this was this year. I did snuck in a couple 2008s. This is Project Reuse, which was a partnership with Reuse Industries, and they did a reusable fashion show, and our own mayor, Wow, was a celebrity judge in the fashion show. And that was during the snowstorm, but we had over 100 people in attendance. So it was a lot of fun.
Yeah, for fashion maven that he's always been.
He got a lot of criticism for that.
Richly deserved.
He was really very thorough. And on the walls for this, we had, Patty Mitchell did an artist in residency with the Athens Middle School, seventh and eighth graders, and it was a project called Swarm. And you can't get a good idea of what that was like with this picture, but it's pretty So we have all sorts of diverse things happening. And as you know, we're a part of the Arts Parks and Recreation Department, and we have the Athens Municipal Arts Commission. Any questions?
Well, I'd like to say briefly, thank you, Emily, for sharing and presenting. I think something that we talked about in our discussion at your office was that frequently in the community, your events happen at night. In the community, we're not always aware of what's happening at Arts West because there's those of us that might be driving home or...
That's a good point. We get busy at about 5:00, and we're there till about 11:00 or later, and that's when the activity is happening at Arts West. I know people will come by during the day and think that, well, I don't know what they think. They think we're tired. But we have three rehearsal and meeting rooms that are in use almost every night, and a performance space for performances or technical rehearsals every weekend. And we've been fully booked. This year will be our biggest year so far, which is the idea. But in the evenings, we have at least two things every day from the end of January until August 1st. So we've got a really very full schedule, and everything's held up pretty well, but I think we're definitely showing that we're filling a need for the community. So we are to be commended for the foresight.
Emily, a couple things. One is, can you give your websites for, to run? Because I was talking earlier today, and we realized you don't have a link on our webpage, which is an oversight. The other thing is, would you kind of speak of the, what you want this year? Was it air conditioning?
Yes. One thing, we...
I'll make a pitch for you.
There's always a pitch. We had a new boiler installed, and so we're seeing some good returns from that. And energy efficient windows installed, so we're saving quite a bit. The old boiler was from 1964, because I found the receipt. And it was about 45% efficiency, and we moved up to over 90% efficient now. And our next step is in air conditioning units for the facility, which are from the early 80s and weren't designed to work with theatrical lighting, which generates quite a bit of heat. And we are not 100% sure that we'll get through this summer. I know I keep lands and buildings very busy coming by to check on that. We've been pursuing grants to get a new air conditioning system, but we're looking at something about $25,000 to $30,000 for an air conditioner, which would include insulating the attic or the belfry of Arts West. So that's something that's definitely going to come up this year.
What was the total again on that?
Twenty-five to 30.
Okay. Realize also that we have the ADA ramp being put in for the lower level this year.
That work will start April 25.
Okay. And there was an energy audit, which I haven't yet to see the entire report.
Right. We had an energy audit in January, and actually, the basement was, we'd done everything, which was exciting, but their recommendations were HVAC system and insulation for the performance space.
I just wanted to say, good work.
Thank you.
Really impressive report of the different activities that are going on. I know that a lot of different folks in the community, from a lot of different segments of the community, are using the space and really appreciate what a welcoming place it is for people.
Thank you. Yes, it's very exciting, and we haven't had any rumbles. But such a diverse amount of use, from children's programming to punk rock shows, to theater, to the Los Flamingo Theater Company. They'll be putting on Bat Boy the Musical in May. Really looking forward to that, based on the report from the Weekly World News. Bat Boy Found in a Cave. Definitely check that out.
Okay.
And I brought you our brochure, so I will...
Bat Boy the Musical, wasn't it?
You can take it. I'm going to pass it on.
Sure, yeah.
No, Phil.
Thank you. Good job. I'll just pass it down. I don't have anything further to say, other than, again, thank you for your hard work, and I think maybe a brief thanks to previous administration, to Mayor Evil Also and Carolyn Others on council that helped get this whole project started.
On to financing personnel. Member Sam, or...
At this point, I'll go. The first thing on our agenda is the CHIP grant and the process changes. Sir of Sacred Director and Mayor, do you want us to just let this go while you investigate further?
Well, he's already proposed, Doug Stanley, based on what they've done in the past and what they think they can do in the future. The proposal is going to be for, the original proposal would be for 13 repair, home repair, three home rehabilitations, and one down payment. In the past years, he's informed us that he did two down payment assistance. He said it's very tough to get in terms of finding, you have to have a, you can't exceed a certain dollar amount for a mortgage, and how difficult it is to find the LMI, individual or family matched up with a home value that would meet that. That was the suggestion, and that was what he was basing his original $300-some thousand application.
So one of our choices is to go ahead with that original application and see how it plays.
With no match, or if you want to be more competitive, to place a match, you know, the funding of, what he said was around, what, $35,000, $36,000?
Yeah.
He'd also said, one of the other suggestions that, I guess, that would take more time, meaning a year would lapse before we'd apply, would be partnering with Habitat for Humanity and targeting a demolition project and then having them rebuild. And of course, we know there's at least one, if not two, in the city that they'll be pursuing this year for demolition. We have a vacant house at different locations.
As well as some combination of houses last year. I think we had two torn down.
We did have at least one.
Okay, so we've read this for the second time. Do you want to give us a recommendation?
I would say, keep going on it. Again, all you're doing is authorizing us, and if we decide we need to put the money match in, we'll let you know.
Okay.
I want to be sure of where our budget is before I go and commit to something like that. I want to investigate more of a revolving loan fund and just find out the ins and outs of that. Cognizant of it, but I do not know how they apply directly, what he was talking about, Doug was talking about, in terms of if that would be something that would fall into our mix and that we'd have to actually expend on that.
Again, the ordinance only authorizes the application, but at this point, the application doesn't involve any funding, so we'll just, as the mayor's suggesting, we'll just bring it up for third reading on the next meeting.
If you decided you wanted to include match, you'd actually have to come back to us because there's no appropriation for that.
That would be my intention, yes. I wouldn't move forward without it.
And the, because we've done some down payment assistance, at some point, people should pay back into the revolving loan fund, but that hasn't happened so far, just because we're pretty early in that process. The other fund that was mentioned, because with the Station Street project payment, that goes into the enhancement fund, and we use that money. It's not a revolving loan fund. It's a city fund, and we use that money for different enhancement projects around town.
So it's taken out of the mix, you're saying?
Pardon?
So it's taken out of the mix, that's what you're saying?
Well, I just don't think it's a revolving loan fund.
Okay. No, okay.
Well, the, right.
I just wanted to voice strong support for getting this submitted, and I think it's, if we're looking at ponying up some money for matching funds, it's with the payoff of bringing $300,000 possibly into rehabilitating houses and getting more homeowner occupied houses in Athens. And I think what that adds to the community far outweighs relatively small, I don't want to say small, I mean, we spend $10,000 to $30,000, that's a lot, but it's relatively small compared to our budget, and I think that the payback would be great on this.
There's also the question of the target area we have to determine. And that, to me, I need to look at the dialogue I had with him, is that you, you know, it's not like you can just throw it over the whole city. You have to pick locations, and once you start going, once you pick that location, we're committed to that location. And again, it sounded like when they revamped this, they weren't really sure what their, all the ins and outs of it. The conversation I had with him previous to this was like, he would go back and say, what does this mean? And they said, we're not sure. So it's one of those ready-fire-aim situations from what we have to do.
And this has been, we have been doing this for five years now.
Yes.
So it's a shame, because it has been successful, it has been utilized, but we're looking at a new formula here, so we'll take some adjustment, obviously, as Councilmember Gosney suggests. Any other councilmembers?
It looks like the target area isn't required, it's just, you know, it says it's advantageous. So if we've been having very highly ranked proposals in terms of the points we've been getting, we may be able to get away with it.
Drop it out of the mix.
Just not having that in there, given the demographics of the city, we could explain why that's not going to work very well for us.
And that's possible, too.
Auditor, can?
Well, I was just going to throw a few things out there about the revolving loan fund. We don't talk about it very often, and I can't speak to whether we can use it for the CHIP funding or not, but you might recall, that fund is operated through EDC, Gary Sealy, and we have three loans out there now. One of them just ended, the Athens Mold machine. Damon's is still on the list, I'm not sure what the status is of that. In recent years, there has been a substantial amount of money in there. It's been harder for them to get loans. There's a lot of paperwork to go through, and several years ago, the interest was much lower than what you could get at a bank, and it was more appealing. Now, with the interest rates dropping, people can go out and get other funding and not have to go through the paperwork that they have to with EDC. And so that money is there. I just wanted to remind you that we used that money to purchase Arts West two years ago. So there are other uses for that money besides local business loans, although, as I said, I can't speak to whether it could be used for this, but I just thought I'd give you a little background of what's happened with that the last few years.
Thank you.
It's worth looking into, is my opinion, and see if you could use it.
Mr. Brothert, did you still want to say something?
I'm just going to say, I think it's already been set.
You need to come up, though.
Well, I just want to add...
We missed you when you made your comments.
Yeah, Greg Brothert, 14 Gravel Avenue. I just want to say that in 1988, when I came back from working a season at Cape Cod National Seashore, I came back to my house, which used to be at rental of sorts, and there was a block rent cycle coming up, of which I was able to take advantage of right after I bought my house on land contract. It was just coincidence. And from that point on, began to go around and recruit all my neighbors, and of course, as you see how things have moved along since 88, and we have a mayor sitting here, I live in neighborhoods, it's just the most consolidated single-family neighborhood in probably in that part of town, the west side of Athens, I'm saying. The effect of the community block grant, it was that it affected a whole transformation. I mean, it hasn't completely been completed, but to a neighborhood that's still mobilizing into single-family housing. Thanks.
Good point. Thank you. Okay, we'll move ahead and wait for further information from the mayor. The next item is loans and notes. The auditor, I talked to her this afternoon on the phone, and I still, this is the only thing I've got, is this little quick list. So the auditor has several things she would like us to consider for next meeting.
So I did copy this for you, and I have something added to that. Nancy, did you get that email with the...
Different number of letters for the finance.
So...
Here we go. Debbie, did you get that email?
Okay, so you have seen that.
I don't know if I got that either.
Okay, it's that loan payoff season time is what we're getting ready for here. We've already started some of the process. The first thing I want to mention, I had brought up last week about our water system revenue notes, which is also called our EPA litigation fund, coming up with, you know, that we have bond council operate. Well, what happened with that was, when I called the bank, as you know, there are a lot of things going on with interest rates right now, and I called and got an estimate of 2% for what our loan might be when we do this in May, but that's not said, they would like us to wait till closer to the end of April to set that amount, which would probably be to our advantage anyway. So we're going to start the paperwork through council without an interest rate in there, but we will have the interest rate by third reading in May, if that's okay. And Debbie, did you get that paperwork from Dennis Schwaly also?
Yes.
Okay, I thought so.
I don't have a problem with you.
So anyway, if anybody has any objections to that, I mean, we can take what they want to give us now, we can wait and see, it's, it's still going to be much better than what we've ever paid in the past, that's for sure. So that's one loan we have coming up. On this other paper, we have the $200,000 that was borrowed for Columbus Road through the water fund, due April 24th, and what we would like to do is have authorization to roll over that note. The water fund has not had the funding issues the sewer fund has had in recent years, but as you recall, not very long ago, we moved almost, almost $200,000, $182,000 out of the water fund and into the sewer fund. Well, actually, the total was even more than that, almost $250,000 for the red tag fees that went back 20 years, as you recall, that were totally put in water, and now we split them. So we don't have the money to pay off that $200,000 loan in the next month or so, but, so we need to roll that over and see if by the end of the year, we can look at that and see if we want to.
One year?
Pay it off, yes, one year. One-year note, Hawking Valley Bank, should also be a favorable interest rate. And then we need to do a few things, like appropriate the interest to go ahead and pay the interest off, which is about $7,000. And the next thing would be, let's see, well, we need an appropriation for that EPA litigation note, and that pa, well, and that paperwork just came through from Dennis Schwaly, so that will come before you. Then we have the community center bonds and the parking garage note, East State Street notes coming up. The community center bonds are set, our payment schedule is set, that was a 16-year bond schedule, and the money is there, there is the, the tax, taken off of our income tax revenue that goes in there, and so that's automatic. The amount that we pay is set, just like OWDA loans, it's automatic transfer, but we need $25 additional appropriation for interest. Not sure how we quite missed that amount, but anyways, that.
I got 20 in my wallet. We have some people offering it to you.
$25, I know. And I don't know, somebody wants to.
Is the tax producing what we thought it would?
Pardon?
The taxes producing what we thought it would for the community center?
Yes, yes. I think we're doing fine with it. And the other thing is, that, we pay principal once a year, and then we pay interest twice. So right now, we're only paying interest, but our total that we'll be paying for the year will be $570,000. So yes, we are bringing the money in, and we just need that very small appropriation to make our interest payment June 1st. The next one, the parking garage note, we are going to make this our final payment. We owe $200,000, we paid $150,000 last year, and so that will be really nice. We're getting our money in our parking garage to pay that off. We need appropriation to transfer about $180,000 to pay that off, put that in the right account line to pay that off.
Just a quick, this is to pay off a loan we took out for repairs and rehab on the garage, almost a million dollars.
Right.
And it's about time to start that all over again.
Yeah, that's what I was digging up to.
So nobody doing any happy dances.
There are a lot of things from people who park there, yes, they would agree with that.
Parking garages maintain a lot of maintenance.
We have, we have a price from last year that Rick put together for evaluation of about $72,000. That's actually to do a structural analysis, do the, the drain pipes are in bad shape. We would also want to look at eventually the lighting system, some of the conduit there is shorting out slowly, and that's why the lights keep going out. This is the, you know, the, the lights, I think, I forget which floor it is, if I would mention it, because otherwise the kids will hang out there. But the fact is, they, they will, we will need some more repairs, as always, and so once we get this finished, we should have some money to do some of it this year, I believe, and then we can start really spending some more time fixing it right.
And I'll tell you, I'd love to see us do an extensive camera system over there, too, whenever we.
That is in, that is in progress, actually. That was a grant you.
Right.
Yeah, less, less, yeah. So you know about it.
So I guess we'll make sure that we can pay off the $200,000 and have the money left for what you would like to do, evaluation?
Or just a little bit. I, I think the first thing I'd like to see is the water pipes done, I think that's, that's about 20, 20,000, 25,000, I'm hearing from George. I think last year's quote was about 20,000, so I'm sure it's gone up a little bit.
Okay. Well, we did, you and Ray and I did discuss all this last week.
Yes.
But maybe we'll talk some more tomorrow.
Definitely.
And see if we're still on track for $200,000, if not, we'll let you know. We have a little bit of time on these, but we've done these, we've done the parking garage and the East State Street note through our bond council, and so we start this process a little bit earlier, at least talking about it, because he does our paperwork, and the way that's been handled is very different. And in the past, in case we don't pay off the $200,000, we have had two ordinances, one for the parking gar, garage, one for East State, and then we had a combined ordinance for the total, and one person, we would have our loans issued through one, one agency. And the way we have had to do that, and I'm not sure if we'll do that, I just talked to someone today, we might change our negotiated payment on that, but, you know, I'll let you know, it just depends on what's, how we get the best deal for the city. But in the past, we have gone out nationally, where our bond council would advertise nationally, and there would be a deadline, and we would have to sit by the phones and take all the interest offers, coupons, and all the things that go with an issuance of that size, and whoever offers us the best deal is who we go with. So we still, the East State Street note is 1.7 million, we'd like to pay 200,000 on that, which is what we did last year, it had been 1.9, and then we need to roll over 1.5 million on that one. So we need appropriations for all of this stuff. These are just some things that, you know, as, as we knew, the original budget adopted dealt mostly with the personal services, and so some of these other things weren't quite addressed in there. And we've also done some moving around between debt funds and funds, as, as we're doing with the sewer fund, where we're moving some of the payments out of the actual fund and putting everything in a debt fund, and to just keep it a little easier to track and for everybody to find. So we're doing that with some of these other ones, too. And so anyway, I don't know if you have any questions about those. There's, you know, sample ordinance in there, debt schedule, if anybody has any questions about anything, council's been giving these, I'm certainly happy to give you more, it's a little scary, but, so I don't know. Nancy, you have the paperwork in front, do you have any questions about what we just gave you? I'm just throwing it out there, we just worked on this last week, for you to look at, but it's.
We'll see it at our next meeting.
My biggest thing is to.
And then there's one final process dealing with the community center, again, operations?
Yes, thank you. We, yeah, the other thing I gave you, and I have a copy for the mayor, I have this also. Thank you. We just worked on this today. We would like to reduce appropriations substantially in the community center fund. I know we've talked about, you know, we worried about the recreation fund, and as I said, I think that they have increased their, their rates for classes and sporting events and things like that, so that, but we think that the revenue for the community center is maybe not going to be what I had set for January 1st, and we'd like to reduce the budget, which would still not be, you know, substantially, it would still be a little bit more than what they actually spent last year. I think I would rather reduce the budget now and then see where we are, instead of running the risk, which I've discussed with you before, all those reductions and appropriations at the end of the year, of having the ability to spend money that we don't actually bring in throughout the year, because the appropriations are too high. We can always increase them later on if the revenue comes in and they need money, I'd rather do it that way. So this worksheet shows a total decrease of 110,000 in the community center fund. We decreased some in the personal services, transactional class 100. This is personal services, and as you all know, we have a substantial savings already than one-third of the, quarter of the way into the year with no director's salary. And then we want to increase the 200 and 300s by quite a bit, but part of that is because we want to move some of the expenditures out of the 500s and 600s, the transfers up to the 300s.
It's the 500s.
Any other questions about any of that? And then a little bit in the 500s, which is a cap fund, and then, as I said, if we move those general fund and internal service fund transfers up to 300s, then that's, decreases that substantially.
So again, as you point out, this is still somewhat of an increase over 2007.
Yeah, if you look on here, it shows that the center column is the 2007 actual expenditures, the total is 885,300. What, our proposed budget would be about 900,000. So it's, it's not much more, but just a very small amount, but it is less than the 1,009,000 that was budgeted originally. Does that make sense?
So as auditor, you're saying that these are your projections for the potential income for 2008, and so we're making these adjustments?
Yes.
And if, hopefully, you're, you're underestimating, then we'll, we can simply reappropriate the money into the lines that need.
Absolutely.
Later on in the year.
Yeah, basically, I, my projection is the revenue isn't going to be quite as high as we had thought when the budget was set, and these are my recommendations for budget increases and decreases.
Is it safe to summarize it by saying, and I do appreciate it, before I ask, make my generalizations, I see. I do appreciate the way you lost the money in those areas that we're seeing increases in, that would be natural gas, electric, and fuel. But is it safe to say that the first part, the 100s, are savings on personnel, the increases in the three, 200 to 300s are mostly administrative support, which we hadn't budgeted initially, right?
Right.
And then the last things are reductions that are small, but in the areas of, well, those are things that we might do piecemeal, but what's, 600, what are we doing there?
The 600s?
Yeah.
We're moving the general fund and internal service transfers up to the 300s.
Okay, got it. And that, so then the overall change is 110?
Uh huh.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
We were trying to puzzle that.
Yeah, sorry, I'll use those arrows, some are up and some are down.
Right.
There's an increase in the 200 and 300s, the rest of them are decreases.
So this, so it's not as, if you think about, when you're talking about the changes, if you were just thinking about the community center, it's not as substantial, but next year, we're going to have to have enough to cover that salary.
Yes, you're exactly right.
Okay. Thank you.
Unless we, unless we tweak the.
Tweak, okay.
Tax.
Yeah, or the, or just the management system setup.
Which is possible. Any questions regarding the community center proposal at this point? Okay, again, use the lobby up for first reading, think about them, and we'll ask questions, and the auditor will be available. Clarification, which I know will be asked.
One more quick thing.
Okay.
There's no questions, one more quick thing, just a reminder that next Monday at 10 o'clock in the front conference room at City Hall, our bond council will be there for anybody who wants to come and find out how that works and what he does for us.
What was, I'm sorry, what was it again?
10 o'clock on Monday, March 31st, in the front conference room at City Hall. That's it?
Thank you. That's it. What I have for financing personnel, member Bain, anything to add?
We're going to let, we're going to go over and do the, what we missed before, before we go to environment.
Before we go to.
Community issues.
We're going to talk about the bike race next, so I'm going to let him.
Okay.
This is Arson, right?
No, yes, we're back to.
Transportation.
We jumped to transportation.
Oh, we're on transport, okay. Just trying to keep up here.
So the people who are sitting here probably feel like they died and went to hell, we'll have a chance to.
But at least if we are in hell, we do have a fashion expert with us, so we'll be okay in the midst, so.
Oh, that's wonderful.
Mayor Wiles, so. Thank you again, Mr. President, Councilmember Bain, for allowing us to discuss transportation or the bike race. Last week, we had some comments regarding the race and input, and I thought that it would be worthwhile to hear from Gina Jeremiah and Paige, are you going to share as well, or are you here for support, or?
I'm supporting my girl Gina.
Okay. So I think this would be a wonderful opportunity to, to allow members of the Athens County Convention and Visitors Bureau, do I have that order correctly, or is it visitors and people? So to discuss and share some more insight that they have regarding the race and its origin and ideas and support, so, thank you. And thank you for being so patient this evening and diligently waiting.
Oh, well, it's my first time here, so, although I don't feel like I've died and gone to hell. I do realize you're able, you're able to say that in here, in this group, a little more frequently than I thought at first.
Only after 8:30.
Or maybe not, but.
When the air hasn't moved for two hours.
Right. I, I know some of you, I don't know all of you, so I am Gina Jeremiah with the Athens County Convention and Visitors Bureau. And quite honestly, I'm here to answer your questions. I understand that you had concerns last week, or some, some concerns were raised, and you might need me to address them. I think that I addressed some in an email to you, in terms of the professionalism of Tim Tyler, who I am sorry is not here this evening, he, due to family issues, he's a single parent, needed to stay at home with his children tonight, and he lives in Columbus, so he was not able to be here, but if you want to let me know what your questions are, if there's anything else, please, don't hesitate.
Sure, I think some, some thoughts relevant to this issue, or maybe concerns about safety and preparation, and maybe even liability, and just wanted to hear.
Like liability insurance?
Sure.
Which is covered. The race promoter has liability insurance, that's a part of the budget. As far as safety is concerned, we actually have a meeting with the Service Safety Director, Paula, on the 31st. I know that Tim's coming down for that meeting, which is next Monday. We have either hay bales that we're prepared, 100 to 110 hay bales to put up, or airbags. I've spoken with Dave Sterbois, who has been involved in the past with the race, who has access to some airbags, which are about seven, seven to eight foot by four. access to some airbags, which are about seven, seven to eight foot by four, three to four foot, huge air sacks basically, which I understand are much more comfortable to run into than hay bales. So hopefully, hopefully we'll get them. It looks, I spoke with Dave today and he's going to track that down. We also have a 200-foot crowd control fence for Court Street. And, you know, I'm sort of new to this, I don't have a historical perspective, so we've put together a committee of some folks who have been involved with it in the past, as well as us, who will have our first meeting next week. So Dave is on that, as Jim Fuller and Andy Krauts are with Sports Sciences at Ohio University. So if any of you want to serve on that committee, that would be wonderful.
Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
I don't want to serve on the committee. I spent my time a number of years ago with the Criterium and have a plaque to prove it, but I don't want to do that anymore. Two things that I am concerned about, or at least would like to make sure is discussed and understood. I have racked my brain, and maybe we have, but for the life of me, I cannot think of another example that the city of Athens has closed streets and brought in street department people, I would think on overtime, for a profit-making organization from out of town. When we do it for International Street Fair, nonprofit, when we do it for Halloween, it's certainly nonprofit, when we do it for, you know, all the other things, it is not an out-of-town promoter that is hoping to make a profit and take it away from the city of Athens. So that is a precedent that I really think that council members need to consider. Another thing, I know Tim is claiming to be bringing 500 bicyclists for this. I do have a rough idea of how many volunteers that takes. I know when we did the criteriums, you know, there were races going on Friday nights, there were races, it just was never-ending, it seemed like. And when these people are running, you have to keep crowds back, you have to have people all along the route that is telling people, "I'm sorry, it doesn't look like anybody's here," but any second right around that corner is going to be coming, a bunch of, it's that kind of a thing. And then again, you know, the other concerns that were mentioned, I think, you know, are things that we need to consider. So those are the points that I would ask your committee to think about.
Thank you.
And I would also, I'm kind of thinking back to the discussion that we had about the proposed street luge and, you know, all the really in-depth meetings and consultations that happened to look at the route and safety and make sure everything was okay with the fire chief in terms of access through town, given the number of roads that were proposed to be closed. So, you know, some of these events are, they're different than the International Street Fair that's closing one main thoroughfare and some little bits of side streets. You know, this, this event, like the street luge, is looking at closing a larger number of streets. And I just don't know if we've had the input from the safety forces about the route and what that does in terms of access through the rest of the town. I know when the, the proposal came forward about the street luge, that we, there was pretty detailed review of what the safety plans were, where hay bales were going to be, actually looking at the documents about the liability insurance. And I don't know if the administration has seen this, this kind of documentation, if we have that, that kind of a recommendation from the administration. We certainly haven't seen that, that level of information.
Could we see also an estimate of what it would cost in city personnel time?
The original format, I think you got packets on that at one point concerning the, this race, bicycle race, is going to take it around in front of the Baker Center. And the first round through the staff meeting did change the route. They basically fell back on the old brick criterium route, which is, I think at this point, I can bring it up at staff meeting again, it will be addressed, I suspect numerous times before the event. I think most of police and fire felt comfortable with that route in place because that's one that has come across before, they've seen it before, as you know. So I will bring it up at staff, but as I say, right now, the, it's, it's a much more condensed and familiar route than it was originally proposed at the first rendition of this bike race. But we can look at the cost and, and again, we can, we can also discuss the route again at staff meeting. I know the street luge was a little bit different animal, it was new, and it was taking about the same route that was impacting the original course that was designated here, mostly closing off the Richland-Mulberry Street and President Street nexus, which was unacceptable to the fire and the police at the time. Just so, so there has been discussion already on some level of safety. I suspect there'll be more as it gets closer.
Member Caston?
Yeah, I'm just wondering if we could possibly get a couple of references from other towns where he's held races in Ohio, just so we can get an idea of how, how they thought the event went and...
Sure, I can do that. I'd also like to just sort of respond to a couple of things that were set up here. First of all, you know, I'm, I'm obviously with the Visitors Bureau and I've been approached by Tim back the end of November, early December, to assist with bringing an event similar to the previous brick criterium to Athens. I've only been with the Bureau for about a year and a half. No one has ever asked for our help to bring any similar event to this, to this uptown area since I've been there, or I would imagine in the last 10 years anyway. So just to respond to what you were, you were saying about having a little bit of a concern, bringing in an outside promoter who clearly does this for a living and is expecting to make a certain amount of money, I, I understand that concern. And at the same time, had somebody locally come to our Visitors Bureau and asked us to help them, I guarantee you we would have. So, you know, it's not necessarily my place to go out and seek people to help us put on an event like this, but if somebody comes to us and asks us for our assistance, that's my job. And I'm happy to do whatever I can, which is why I'm here. As far as the documents, looking for insurance and that sort of a thing, I'm, I'm happy to produce whatever it is you need. Again, I'm, I'm new to this part of it, I don't know what your, your expectations are, so I think that it's fair to ask me for them. So at any time, if you want any of that information, I'm happy to share any of that with you. Tim has been very open to work with, very easy to work with, and very responsive whenever I've had, and I've had a lot of questions. And I do a lot of talking, so I have to, I have to ask a lot of questions because I have to know. But if at any time, any of you have any concerns or questions, feel free to email me and I will, you know, pass on Tim Tyler's email address to you if you need to. He is going to be here on Monday. I'm happy to meet with any of you at that time, also with him, to address more of these concerns. I'll ask him to bring copies of insurance and that sort of a thing. Geez, I forgot what your question was already.
I didn't have a question, I was just wondering if we could maybe get a couple of references from other towns in Ohio that have...
Oh, okay, and I'm happy to do that. And I have talked to a few other local people in, in Athens, obviously a lot on this. And Tim has been involved with the previous race also, and I know that there have been issues. There's, there are, whenever you're organizing anything this, this large, there are always issues for the people who are involved in it, and not everybody gets along. So I know that he has somewhat of a history in Athens. Some people like him a great deal and enjoy working with him, and other people had tension. That's to be expected. I do know, after talking with a considerable amount of people about Tim, that he's done a lot to promote bicycling throughout Ohio, and people like coming to Athens for races, and people like coming to uptown Athens for races. And this is a very good economic opportunity for Athens. So if Tim makes a couple hundred dollars on this particular race, or whatever it is that's in the budget, I can tell you that the budget doesn't show any more than $500, then, then I'd like to know perhaps what that means for Athens. I would imagine probably quite a bit more. So, but again, I'm happy to work with anybody who comes to me about an event, see what we can do about that. Greg? I don't know if I'm to address you.
I don't know, that's okay.
Sure.
It's public work. Gina, I find myself excited about something like this happening in Athens again, but there is something that exists now that didn't exist before when the critter was here, and I wonder if councils really thought about that at the street level, is that the lower part of Court Street was, the bricks there were installed by some not-so-significantly skilled people. And, and it is a hazard, it is a hazard for road bikes.
The route, as the old route, would go from state, so it wouldn't go any further north than State Street.
It wouldn't go in the lower, yeah.
It used to be state, court, state, congress, union, and that's about where it's going to be.
Really? Because I remember, I actually worked on the criterium as, as a volunteer.
That's the present route that is there right now. I know there was one time, one time it went over that carpet.
You come back, oh, that was when, you know, I was really excited. Pretty high-speed.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, Mr. Phil.
Okay, well, I just wasn't sure what the route was.
Just to be fair to our, our talented and hard-working street department, I'd like to say there are some pretty unique circumstances in that block of Court Street, where there are some large storm tunnels that make it difficult to do the, the work on that part of the street. They had a very limited amount of vertical space to work with to try to level those, and they were using, they were recycling bricks, using the ones off of Jeff Hill that had special bumps on them because it was a steep hill and they were designed for the horses' hooves to be able to get a better purchase as they were going up the hill. So I just, I, I think that we do have some pretty skilled folks working in this district.
Anything that slows traffic down on Court Street, I'm pretty much in favor of personally.
And you have to look and say, last, last week's snowstorm, they did a great job.
Yeah.
And they, and they're pretty quick about closing off the street. We had a little bomb scare at the courthouse, Cora County Court, courthouse, and they did a good job of that, too. I don't think that was a scheduled event, though.
Any other questions or concerns?
Thank you, Gina.
Oh, thank you, thank you very much. Again, if you have any questions, please call me or email me. Thanks.
Thanks.
Final thing, 903, try to make it fast. I asked Pat, our law director, Pat Lang, to go over a proposal that Jim Siller brought forward concerning outside operations. And Patrick returned information, and all of you have a copy of it. The first item that you have outlined in blue is 08407. And to, I think Patrick passed that to each of us to show us that there are, he thinks in the noise ordinance and also in the zoning code, articles that would cover what the citizens that live north of the downtown were asking. The 10:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m. there, section of 08407 is outlined, and it seems to me that, I can remember this pretty well, and it says, "Those businesses with outside operations that have noise or sound between the hours of 10:00 p.m. and 7:00 a.m. each day, Sunday evening through Saturday morning, or between the hours of 12:00 a.m. and 7:00 a.m. Saturday, and Sunday mornings in such a manner as to be plainly audible at a distance of 50 feet from the building, structure or vehicle which it is located in or exceeds 85 decibels at any point outside of the property plane or source of the noise sound shall be prima facie evidence of a violation of this section." Okay, so I guess I forgot we had put that in. So maybe I could ask the administration, what would, if you could in your staff meeting, ask how, how 08407's Article 7 would pertain to the citizens' request for relief from the noise that's been keeping them awake on the north side of town?
Okay, so you're asking how we're enforcing the noise ordinance from...
Well, I wasn't quite asking it that way. I was just wondering if they were aware of it. A lot of times, things kind of drop off the edge after we get through reading a few times, I've noticed. You know, I'm, I'm thinking information can, will flow more readily, I've seen it already. So you could ask, you know, here we have it, this is our attempt, let's see how...
Are you saying it with blabbering mouth?
No, I'm, no, I'm saying that you are, when things leave, when we finish, I have confidence that it goes to the staff meeting.
Okay.
That was not the case earlier.
And when you say number seven, you're talking about Section 7 in there, or?
Yeah, Section 7, that particular one. The second thing that Pat gave us is business, oh, yes.
I would just point out as well, that in, in 130410B, we did add the word "allow," right? So a person, business establishment, or organization making, causing, or allowing the noise, those are all things that can be violations, so...
Can you repeat that part of the ordinance again, what you decided?
Can we give it to you?
It's on the first page.
No, I didn't, I didn't get it.
We'll give it to you.
Okay. I'm out of the loop, sorry.
So it seems like it could just be an enforcement issue using the existing code.
Thanks.
Okay, and then Pat also said that we could work on the zoning code if we were so inclined. And I was, and I must admit that I don't read B3, general business zone, as a regular practice, but I was surprised at what's in there. And this would be on page 23-16, what's already in there. "All businesses, services, or processing shall be conducted wholly within an enclosed building, except for the sale of automobile, fuel, lubricants, and fluids," I suppose you could say they're lubricants. "...service stations, loading and unloading operations, parking, outdoor displays, storage of vehicles," in other words, sort of the equivalent of a gasoline station. And then if you look at two, it says, "No building customarily used for night operations," and I realize this is totally out of date and why we really need to revise our code, "such as a bakery or milk bottling or distribution station, all the same, anything that has night operations shall have any opening other than stationary windows or required fire escape within 100 feet of any R-zone." Or, "And any space used for loading and unloading," it goes on to talk about that. And three says, "Eating and drinking establishments, the principal building shall be at least 200 feet from any R1 or R2 zone." So I guess I'm wondering how on earth our zoning permitted the problem that is being caused in that neighborhood. And then we could say, "Commercial recreation, if drinking is that's, is what it is, under six, at least 200 feet from any R-zone." So it seems to me that the existing archaic outdated zoning code that we have already covers outside operations.
Well, and I can, I can just tell you that as to the Section 1 under the B3 regulations there, I know that I had spoken with, with the Code Enforcement Office about this, that it's how we've enforced this in the past is to interpret where it talks about, it says "all businesses, services, or processing." They basically use that as a regulation on the actual point of sale. So so long as, for instance, you know, there are no actual sales taking place outdoors or no, you know, people aren't able to actually order food out there, if they're, if the business is being conducted indoors and then they're just taking it outdoors, and that has not been deemed to be a violation of that section, at least that's how it's always been interpreted in the past.
So is there any language we could do to change this wrong-headed approach that we have?
Well, my, my recommendation on that had been, I mean, based upon the letter that we had gotten from, from Mr. Silleri in the previous committee meeting, where we had talked about areas within 500 feet of a residential zone, my recommendation would be to, to look at that Section 3, which talks about eating, eating and drinking establishments, and just adding that into there if we wanted to say that businesses within an R3 that are conducting outside operations, that if they're within 500 feet of any residential zone, that they would have to cease operations by a certain time. But of course, that would have to go to the planning commission and any, this would not affect any existing businesses, which of course would be grandfathered in under the old regulations.
And 500 feet, it seems to me that we had that discussion before with respect to hurricane, didn't we? Yeah, but I, you know, I think it might be worth it, Pat, if you write it down, we could put a resolution forward to the planning commission, asking them to give us a...
And we would be asking to just add that on to Section 3?
Mm-hmm. If you'll give us that language and then we'll put it up.
Sure.
If my committee's so inclined.
And then council can determine what, what...
If they don't want to vote for that, they can vote it down, but at least we've made our effort for the residents in the north side.
Has this committee decided what time restriction they'd wanted to include on that?
What did it say in the, what did the citizens ask for?
The citizens had mentioned 11, but the noise ordinance has a, the limitation actually kicks in at 10:00 during the week or midnight on weekends.
Well, let's make a parallel, if you're all right, with the noise ordinance. Okay.
So, so you're looking for a resolution to prohibit outside operations in a B3 after a certain hour, is that what I'm hearing?
Or within 200 feet.
Or within 200. Because if you look at the, and I'll give you this one in a moment, but if you look at the way the general business zone specifications are written, I am hard-pressed to understand how it was allowed there in the first place. I mean, it's not in your watch, so you don't have to defend it, Ben.
Well, if I remember, the B3 actually lets, it has to be within, what, 100 feet, 200 feet, right?
200.
Okay. And this has to do with any eatery or drinking establishment, or just outside?
Just any.
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 Okay. Realize this is one of the discussions we've been having about the Stimson Avenue. Realize this is one of the discussions we've been having about the Stimson Avenue development as well, that something like, you know, you can't put a restaurant there because it's within 200 feet of a R-zone. At the same time, there is a difference between an outside eatery versus inside or drive-throughs, which was, I think, the intent. It's somebody else's, it's Nancy's.
Yeah, I was just, I remember asking Debbie Walker to look this up for me with respect to Manu Dyu moved down to on Columbus Road, you know, because of the hours of operation and so on and so forth. So, I mean, the hours of operation are important, because people who live in R1 zones that are often close to B3 zones have reasonable expectations concerning noise.
Okay, so the question that the mayor just raised is one, I've been looking at the copy of the zoning code with all the strike-through from when council last made changes, which was before my time on council, but...
You would have had to been here.
Pardon?
You would have had to been here.
Yeah, well, my understanding was there was some resistance to the use of strike-through, so it was a little difficult for folks to see exactly what was being changed, but again, I wasn't here for all of the back and forth about that, but if you look at the section in 24, or 230407 about B3s, it used to say, "Eating and drinking establishments," and that was like a category, and then within that, it said, "Drive-in eating and drinking places, summer gardens, and road houses, the principal building shall be at least 200 feet from any R1 or R2." So it was not all eating and drinking establishments, it was drive-throughs and outdoor places. So when the zoning code was last amended, in looking at those, it was, all those specific things were taken out, and it was left to apply to all restaurants, which I think was not the intention. I just think that we have existing restaurants that are closer than that to residential zones and don't have that kind of impact. I think originally it was supposed to apply specifically to the outdoor operations around restaurants. So if we considered something like this, it would be more like going back to what existed previously.
Couple of years ago.
Yeah.
And I think, but I think the other part of it is, first of all, you have council sitting around, taking out its own appendix, so to speak, and looking at this and going over this, I mean, making decisions that they're probably not really prepared to make. And then we send it to the Planning Commission, and they're citizens for the most part, and they're not planners, and then they change it around, the way they think it'll be better. And then we get it back, and it's got strike-through, so, you know, I wouldn't begin to guess what we were thinking at the time, I think we were thinking, "Thank God, it's over." I mean, because you go through it, and you say, "Oh, I hope to goodness nothing changed that was important in this, because what we really need is a planner, or at least a consultant who can come in and take our wordy zoning code and make it reasonable." But in the absence of such a movement, at this point in time, I will ask the law director, please, to give me a resolution, and you can vote it up or down next week.
Let's see if I...
Okay, you first, lady.
Ladies first.
I'll take it, because it's really, I believe...
Not a normal process that we follow here.
I believe that the Planning Commission's already talking about this because of the issues that came up around Stimson Avenue. So we may be getting a resolution from the Planning Commission soon that deals with exactly the same question.
Yes, we're still working on the homework of it, but there is a definite, we're looking at the definition of the B3s in terms of the eateries, and we're trying to track down what a roadhouse is. I guess we haven't been able to find it.
Roadhouse is actually the 30s.
No, that's somebody else's. That's been delegated out to another member of the plan.
But in fact, what we really probably need is a more comprehensive review by somebody who's a specialist in the ORC, who can do this in a reasonable way.
Thank you.
Yes, gentlemen, sir.
Thank you. I think the challenges, too, that we may face as a city regarding some of the outside activities, also related to this would be the smoking, changes in the smoking laws, that now people are loitering outside the establishments in the evenings, banding together with cigarette in hand, and maybe bottle in other hand, if there is an outside area, if there is a, if there is such an outside area, a garden per se. So I've noticed, in some of the subtle research that I'm just walking around in the evening or being in certain parts of the town, that I have noticed noise that is problematic from people loitering outside doors that are smoking. And I don't know where, since it's such a new law at the state level, I don't know how that needs to be addressed, or if that's part of this problem as well.
That's something to consider, but I think in this case, it's the concentration of it, I mean, 20, 30, 40 people sitting together cheering, talking, I mean, and it's wonderful that they're having fun, but it's just the fun is an obstacle to the sleep of the other people nearby neighborhood. And once again, I would like to suggest that Randy Gray, is that the police officer, Randy Gray?
Gray, yes.
Yeah, Randy Gray stood in front when the liquor permit was up for Bronings, and he gave an absolutely fabulous expert witness statement, and of course, it was on a very fine point about whether the moral position of the applicant, but he talked about how this is really a unique situation, likewise, some others down the street would be similarly unique, where you have the terrain and the facing, the positioning of the facility are such that they create a nuisance in this very specific case. They said, "If it were anything," and as he said in his expert way, "anything down the street, the noise would go, and it wouldn't be a problem, but in this one, if there's one on that corner of Grosvenor and Stimson, or Carpenter, I should say, and then down the street, likewise."
However, if you look at the existing code, if it were a restaurant, it's across the street from a residential zone, so that's less than 200 feet.
So how was it?
So how did that happen? We don't know.
I don't know either.
But I was going to raise my hand.
It's a gentleman.
I remember our discussion about the first step we took toward allowing sidewalk tables, and I'm sure that we got input from the Planning Commission with regard to zoning change about that. It doesn't show up now, but I can remember comments and discussions that we had, so all in all, we all, we just need to look back, as you say, when the discussion finally ends, we're not sure exactly what we said or when it was said, so...
We could ask Debbie, Debbie, do we have a sunset time where they have to pull the tables in, in our ordinance, were we allowed? Some of the places are gone, the perks and...
I thought it had to do with operations business times.
It did?
And I think it wasn't in, it wasn't in zoning code, I think it was in Title IX or 13.
And I think that we just wrote it in as part of the permit for those places that were using outside operations.
I think it was just in ordinance.
That's what I meant, yeah.
Yeah.
You think it was, that's all?
Yeah.
That's what I, that's how I remembered. I remember it started off with Costas Bench.
Right.
And it grew from there into, you know, other places that wanted it, and Sarah was mayor, and she basically came up with a list of recommendations of what, how wide the sidewalk needs to be and all that, and I think it was reduced ordinance form, and that's all it is.
I think Paul's probably right, though, it probably is in Title IX, though, because it was an ordinance, and they would have put it into the code. I'm assuming...
Either nine or 13, I think it's in the sidewalk area, I seem to recall seeing it recently.
It is, because I remember Stephen was quoting something to me about what he had out there, Stephen's Restaurant, that's right.
Has to do with the width of the sidewalk, 11 feet plus, and then you can have a table.
Well, once again, I'd like to thank the law director for getting back to me with this and helping me to see some ways around it. Thank you.
Could I have a quick miscellaneous? I think all of you got in your mailboxes a resolution that was forwarded to us by the City Commission on Disabilities regarding parking of individuals with handicapped tags. Basically, it boils down to the Athens City Police would wait for, would allow a two-hour grace period before such a vehicle was towed, unless that vehicle was creating a safety issue, parked on a yellow line, and...
Fire hydrant.
Fire hydrant, et cetera. And as I tried to say in an earlier conversation, our city police don't authorize towing for anything except safety violations in general, anyway, so this is more a resolution of understanding. The author, Bruce Ergood, and I met with Captain Pyle, and Captain Pyle agreed that this could become an internal policy, reiterated it with the police department, so the mayor looked at it, and so we have it before us to, I think, maybe a one reading resolution to be accepted, I don't know, so I'd like to bring this forward. There may be some cleaning up of language that occurs, but I'd like to bring it forward in next meeting.
Having addressed all committee items, next regular meeting, no, one other?
One hand was up.
Mr. Broadhurst.
Greg Broadhurst, 14 Granville Avenue. I would like to, in relation to the discussion we've just had, bring up the point, as you have noticed over the, over the time, that more and more parking in the uptown area of Athens especially has been taken up by, which I consider a large number of parking areas, for to say, which I don't disagree with entirely, but I think the allotment of the number, and also, and especially when you put that in the context of dedicated cab stands, which aren't used, and a number of other business zones which seem to be being utilized, it takes, this takes up a lot of parking, I think, that previously existed and worked well, and makes it a little more difficult to find parking downtown, and I just wanted to, I hope that Transportation Committee will take another look at allocation of special use zones in that regard.
Thank you.
Any questions about that? Specifically, do, I mean, we as citizens have to pay a fee for, to use parking, you know, parking meters or whatever, the business, businesses as far as out-of-town business especially that use the loading zones and such, the question is, is there any, is there any fee for that? Do they have, I mean, I don't know.
They pay parking meters.
No, they don't have meters on the loading zones. And it's like, from such a period of time to such a period of time, and why?
I park there and make deliveries, and I put a dime in.
There's meters on the...
There are meters, okay, there are meters on there, I guess I have...
Sorry, everybody has to pay meters, including handicapped stickers, so everybody pays meter.
But not cab stands, and, actually, there's a couple of places where I don't see meters at.
I think one of the courthouse does not have meters, if that's what you're talking about.
Well, anyway, I was just encouraging council, Transportation Committee, to take a look at allocations of special, well, special use zones, if you want to call them, in the uptown area, in regards to the numbers of allocations for different uses, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's see, next Monday, it's the 5th Monday, so having no scheduled meeting, we will be back for a regular session of council on, it's late, 7th, 7th, 8th.
Street tour on the 5th.
And street tour on the 5th.
Is that official?
It's official.
We stand adjourned.
Did we decide, I'm being serious?